Welcome to School Choice Report where we explore everything about one of the most important education topics. I'm your host, David Hardy. In this podcast, we'll be talking to experts, educators and parents to get a deep dive into the world of school choice. Whether you're an advocate, skeptic, or just curious, this podcast is for you. So sit back, relax, and let's get started with the conversation. Hello and welcome to the School Choice Report. My name is David Hardy. Today, our podcast guest is Stacy Wamsley, a school board director at the Westchester area school district. Stacy received her Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical and aerospace engineering from Cornell University and is currently a director at Pfizer's digital organization and serves as a client partner for oncology medical affairs. Stacy has two sons. Both of them have special needs, and it was their experience during the pandemic and remote learning that got Stacy involved in advocating for public education. Stacy, welcome to the podcast.
Thanks for having me, David. I appreciate the opportunity.
Things are a little wild over there at the Westchester School District.
It's a little spicy.
They're trying to pass a resolution that's gonna make it tough to have any kind of school choice options. And you stood up against it. Now, you've been a school, you've been a school director there at Westchester for two years. How'd you get interested in running for school board? And why did you decide to make a four-year commitment to serve your community this way?
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to tell my story. I can't say that it was on my bucket list or my bingo card for life. But, you know, what happened was the pandemic. I mean, I've always been involved in my children's education. You know, as you mentioned in my bio, I have two children, two sons who are 12 and 13, and they both have special education needs. And so I've, you know, been very connected to the process and the system of public education since they entered it in kindergarten. And frankly, even prior before that, because one of my children has a communication disability, and so he was part of the early intervention services of our local intermediate unit. So this was ground I was familiar with, but I was not prepared for was in 2020, when public schools essentially shut their doors and closed. I was not prepared for how unprepared the entire system was. I want to just start by saying, though, I believe in public education. I have people in my life, family, my best friend, in fact, who are all educators in public education. So this is not something that I don't understand from both sides of it, both as a parent and people who work in the space. I think our district did the best they could. I think our administration did not have us in a place that we needed to be, and that the cracks in that preparation showed very quickly. That, for special education folks, that meant our children who had either 504s or IEPs who require, you know, either classroom interventions or support services or therapies, they weren't getting them. I mean, they just weren't happening. There was no avenue for the speech therapist and the occupational therapist and the school psychologist to access these children. And so, you know, as the, the school situation prolonged, you know, we were really expecting in the summer of 2020, our district had set the stage. They had invited us to participate in the process. They had us conditioned and frankly, believing that we were going to be reopening. That was the plan. We were supposed to be reopening.
This was in, this was in what, what period of time?
In 2020, in 20, the summer of 2020. And what ended up happening-
The summer of 2020, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And what we got was a bait and switch. And we, you know, we're still, we were so, so confused because we went into our July school board meeting expecting a return to in-person. And what we got instead was something, we got remote. We went back remote and with a promise of at some point, we'll come back hybrid. And what hybrid meant is that the students went two days in person. They alternated cohort. So like, you're depending on your alphabet letter of your last name, you would go for Monday, Tuesday. Everybody was virtual Wednesday. You would, and then you would swap for Thursday and Friday. And we felt really upset about that because that is not what we had been told to be prepared for. And at this point, I was exhausted. I have a full-time job. That's very demanding. I was up every night until 1:00, 2:00, sometimes 3:00 in the morning, trying to repair my children's materials. Because even though schools use online learning platforms, they weren't prepared for this. Our district was not prepared. They did not have YouTube embedded safely inside of Schoology or CSO so that kids who were using YouTube for lessons could use it safely. And there were some very unfortunate things that happened as a result. So, you know, it was very frustrating for me as a parent because I was absolutely invested in helping and supporting this process, but I was burning out. And so when, you know, when we got to the fall of 2020 and we were forced to go back remote and then hybrid, the real catalyst, back to your original question, what, what really lit my fire, if you will, was on the second day of in-person during that hybrid transition, my older son, who was in fifth grade at the time, was at recess. So this is only his second day back, second day at recess outside with his classmates. Another child, and this was an accident, didn't happen on purpose, but there was a child who was running full speed and collided with my son. And my son ended up with a concussion. And the other child was fine. And as a result, my son could not be on screens for three months, over three months. And when you're in hybrid learning and three days of your instruction are on a screen, how do you learn? And what, what I couldn't believe or understand, and frankly, still don't to this day, is my district's response to that was, oh, well. I said, well, he's gonna rest for the five days that he's supposed to rest, and then he's gonna come back in person. Not just because he has a medical condition, but because he has a 504, he's a special education student. You are gonna take him back Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. I'll deal with the Wednesday. I was happy to deal with one day of, you know, lost instructional time. They denied me. They said he didn't have an IEP. They had made up a policy. This was not state mandated, county mandated. It was not, it was made up. They just decided they were gonna draw the line. And if you didn't have an IEP, you couldn't come back in person full-time. And the irony was-
Your son had a 504?
He had a 504. And he was being evaluated for an IEP when this happened.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's meant some words.
So at this point in time, I had been very vocal in my community. I had started a Facebook group that grew to almost 1,000 people. That was called the WCASD Birkenmorder Group. And so I had been a very vocal advocate. I, you know, participated in a lot of community events. A coalition of parents and I, we, we were doing everything we could. We were appealing to our district, appealing to our county representatives, contacting people at the state level. We were organizing town halls with psychiatrists and psychologists and people who were experts in child development, raising the flag on what was gonna happen to these children. Learning loss, changing the ways that their brains were developing, that we were losing the window of opportunity to impact the trajectory of these students' lives. You can imagine how we feel now with all of the data and information that's been collected since that time. Needless to say, my district did not grant my wish. They denied my child access to in-person education. I fought for six, seven weeks before I finally pulled him out and said, if you're not gonna get, educate him, I'm gonna put him in a school that will. And when I do this, I'm not bringing him back. He's gonna make the transition and he's gonna stay there until he finishes in that school. At the same time, and this is the part about choice, I wrote a charter application and I applied to open a micro school in my district as a charter school. And I went through the charter process because I said, if you're not going to educate these children, I'm gonna find a way to do it. While doing that, I also came to learn, Villanova University hosted a event, an online event, that taught us about the education law in the state. And I came to find out that every school district, every school board, let me be clear, every school board in the state of Pennsylvania could turn around and offer educational opportunity accounts to the students in their district if they chose to. We have the power, the boards have the power. We don't need legislation out of Harrisburg. We do not need the state to find the solution to this. We have the legislative power to do that.
Okay. And so, did you, did you bring this up at the school board meeting?
We brought up everything that we could. Needless to say, my charter application was denied. And the day after it was denied, I officially became a candidate for school board. Because the failure of my school board to respond with compassion and professionalism and to do anything other than rubber stamp whatever the superintendent put in front of them, I decided we need a new leadership.
Well, it sounds like COVID school closures opened up everybody's eyes to the need for school choice. But now, is it just important, is it just as important today now that COVID's gone and we don't have COVID lockdowns?
It's more important. It's more important now. Because there has been learning loss that we have not seen in our generation, or frankly, in any generation. And not only do we have learning loss that is unprecedented, but you have a population of students in the public school system who now no longer know how to learn the way that we know how to teach. Teachers across this nation don't understand what, what to do. They can't rely on the things that have worked in the past. Their experience almost means nothing. We need a new playbook. And that takes time. And these children deserve to seek education where their needs will be met. The need for choice is more urgent than ever.
Well, it seems to me that people say they don't want choice because it's gonna take away money from the public schools. But isn't sending your child to an ineffective public school just a bigger waste of money? Or a bigger waste of money?
Yeah. What I found is that public education is big business. With big budgets and big business. We have quite a big budget. I don't know if you researched us at all, but in the last 10 years, our budget has grown from $200 million to $300 million in just 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you can imagine, like, there's a lot of factors that get into that, including retirement and pensions and all of that. But we pay a lot of vendors for a lot of services. So there's a lot of big business associated with public education.
They're talking, you, you brought up learning loss. It's been well documented that learning loss was pretty significant. And it will continue, we're gonna continue to experience the ramifications of learning loss for decades to come. How much power do school boards across Pennsylvania have to address that learning loss? And are they doing enough, do you think?
That's a great question, and certainly one that I wish it was a yes/no answer. The reality is, you know, the school boards, we don't set curriculum, right? We review curriculum, right? We, we review what the district brings us, what the administration, the superintendent put in front of us. What I see as our obligation is to take a deep dive on that, to look beyond the surface and not just rubber stamp everything that is brought in front of us, whether it's curriculum, state test results. And what I have found to be the challenge in my district, my county, and I think this is experienced in many places, is that is, there's this really unfortunate trend of what I would, like, what I call toxic positivity. People are really uncomfortable with facts. The fact is, children in my district don't know how to read and do math at the level that they could even eight years ago. We've had seven years. We've had seven years of learning loss in my district that was accelerated by, by COVID. So we are not doing enough. School boards could be doing more. I think that when you look at the influence of national and state-level organizations, such as the teachers' unions and the school board associations, what, a lot of these boards have been conditioned to do, regardless of their political affiliation, I think this could be true of anybody's, of any board, regardless of which side of the aisle they're on, is that they've been conditioned to maintain appearances and to present a united front with administration. And I, that's not how I view the role of the board. We, we're the, we're the board, we're the board of directors. If this were a company, it's our obligation to make sure that the board, that the company is using its resources wisely, that is producing the outcomes that it promises. And if we're not doing that, we're not doing enough.
Well, you know, one of the things that happened during COVID with a lot of the parent reaction, that parents started to become branded as the troublemakers. And I get the feeling you got one of those tags.
I have a nickname.
You wanna share it with us?
Well, what I will share is that it got so heated during my election cycle. Mind you, I ran in a region where there were two seats and there were two incumbents. And I knocked both of them out. So I knocked the first out in the primary, and the second one got knocked out in the general election. And the, the second one was actually the president of the board at the time.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But in the, in the final days of the election, one of our fans, and we had quite a few, wrote a very interesting comic strip style satirical poster and printed it. She, they created caricatures for each of us. And they plastered it in our town, even on telephone poles on this, on some of the school properties. And I, to this day, am tickled by that. Because the moniker they gave me was misinformation. And so, I pride myself on being misinformation. Because the hallmark of my campaign and my continued advocacy is that I shine a light on truth. You may not always like it. And I'm not here to embarrass people. And I've built a really nice relationship. I want to be very clear about something. In two years, we've had three superintendents. It has been very volatile in my district. We have just recently hired an incredible superintendent. And if I had to have done nothing else in my four years of tenure, being a part of the process to select and hire this individual has absolutely made every night, every meeting, every hour I've invested in this absolutely worth it. Because he has the talent to help us turn this ship around. And so, it can really be as simple as having the right leader in the organization. I, I have incredible respect for him, and he's incredibly transparent. And that's part of what I love about his style. Because that is what I have been trying to do for the last three and a half years, is to be transparent and truthful. And when things aren't bright and shiny and all positive, what's happened in our district doesn't, I, I'm not laying that at the feet of our teachers. I think our teachers have done what they can with what they have. I lay it at the feet of the administration and the school board. Because I don't think our teachers have had what they needed. And I think that's a very different narrative than what was attached to me, is that I don't believe in public education. I don't believe in teachers. I think people are doing a bad job. I think certain people are not doing the best job possible. But that doesn't mean I don't believe in teachers.
Well, I mean, one of the things that, that people who oppose a public education initiative sometimes get is, you have to, you have to be a person who's destroying public education. You can't, you can't just be a critic, or you just can't want to see some improvement. You want to see it destroyed, completely destroyed, and burn down the buildings and kill all the teachers. So.
I spend an incredible amount of hours, and I have two children, and I'm a single parent. I would never do that. I would not throw my time away to deconstruct it. I am here to be a part of the solution. But I also think competition breeds excellence. And that's why I do support educational opportunity accounts. I do think that the recent passed legislation that Representative Ward brought back as a, you know, she, she revisited what were the Lifeline scholarships and brought it back as passed. And the change is made to that. I mean, I don't, I honestly, and I, and I raised this the other night in the meeting. I said, I don't understand why we are doing this. We're not in the bottom 15%. So this does, this is not material to our district. I said, and to me, what this, how this reads is, the state is trying to offer immediate relief to children and families who are in the most, the most impacted school districts, who have the lowest performing school districts, and who have a financial limitation that prevents them from exercising any other form of education choice. And why would you not want to do that? What is more equitable than offering a hand of support to the students and families who can't afford to get out of a situation that is forced upon them because of what the state of their current public education system is?
Well, what they, what they invariably do is they're voting to lock those children in bad situations. And, and that really is, that's, that's criminal. And, and I think you've, you've hit on something that's pretty important. These, these resolutions, I'm gonna talk about the Fair Funding Resolution in a second, but they've been, they've been presented in all the school boards across the state. School boards that are, are very affluent, where kids are doing very well. And, and they're, they're, they're doing it to act in solidarity with inner, inner-city people who are, like I said, are locking kids in bad situations.
And if you look at the language of the resolutions, talk about misinformation. So from what I learned in our meeting the other night, so, you know, we sit, our, our members sit on many different committees and bodies. And so there is one appointment called the legislative appointment. And that is through our intermediate units. So the state of Pennsylvania, right, has these county intermediate units, right, who support the public school system. And we know unequivocally because of many right-to-know or FOIA requests over the last three and a half years, that a huge influencing body during all of the pandemic were the intermediate units. And a lot of the policies and procedures were coming through the intermediate units to the districts, and they were just accepting them. The intermediate unit legislative committees is where this was raised. At least that's how it came through in Chester County. So our, our board member who sits on that legislative committee, it was brought to them as a group. And then there was a board director in another district who took the assignment to shop it around to every district. And every district was free to revise it and edit it as they see fit. I know another district nearby decided to not vote on it the other night because they decided it needed language improvements. I would have liked to have seen our district align the language in the resolution to the facts of the, of the Fair Funding Act. Unfortunately, the version that they, they ultimately passed, I was the only dissenting vote, has a lot of incorrect information because it does not address the changes that Representative Ward did make with PASS.
Like, like the whole idea that it's students in low-achieving schools, which in, in Chester County is four. Okay? In Philadelphia, there's 138. And if you combine Philadelphia's low-achieving schools with the four surrounding areas, I think it's 175. Now, look, last week, and I, our viewers, I mean, our listeners may not know this, but last week, and school boards across Pennsylvania voted on this resolution. And they're saying it's to support fair funding in education. Okay? That's the Trojan horse, fair funding. But this resolution sounds great. But we all agree that funding should be fair and equitable. But when you start reading the fine print, it becomes obvious that there's an agenda behind this, this resolution. What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts when you read the resolution? Did you see any red flags? And what, what concerned you the most about this resolution?
I personally highlighted, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six areas that I found problematic in our version of the resolution. Yep. So our version of the resolution indicates that it, that passed specifically that the PA Award for Student Success Program would divert money away from public schools. Yet, PASS was specifically designed at Governor Shapiro's request to be separate and independent of any funding that is currently part of public education funding. This was separately carved out of the state budget. When I challenged that, the response was, well, and if the state had more money, they should have given it to public education. And they said, well, by that logic, anything that the state invests in other than public education is a denial of funding of public education. And that's not how this works. So they, they rose to the occasion and found the solution that Governor Shapiro asked for.
Okay.
That's not taking away from public education.
No, but they believed that all the money belongs to them.
Yes. They also-
What's your second one?
So, the next part was about charter schools, that there's already choice in the state because of charter schools. And I, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a map of every district, but like, is there a good charter option nearby for all of those students? Because you could argue there's online charters, but given what we just learned about remote and online learning these last three years, I don't think saying that online charter isn't necessarily a rock-solid and equitable solution for these students. So the availability of a charter, and also-
Well, here's the other thing. Every one of these school districts votes down charter applications whenever they come up.
You don't say.
You know, yeah, go to a charter, but you won't have one.
It was, so it did come up. There was an RTK that revealed that the president, at the time of our board, called, the night of my charter hearing, what, he called it Shark Tank Charter School Styler. Like, he made a joke about it. Like, he literally treated it like a joke. And I was not joking. I had a space, I had a partner who had a certificate in education. Like, we were not kidding. We were prepared to do this if we got approved.
Oh, listen, I've been in the charter school business since it opened. And I'll tell you, they fight tooth and nail. They fight every application tooth and nail. Now, you could, you could keep resubmitting and maybe you can wear them out. But on your first, second, or third attempt-
I would give for school board instead. I chose not to resubmit. I ran for school board instead.
There you go. There you go. Okay. So, so tell me, tell me some more things, problems you had with this legislate, with this resolution?
You know, they, they just was really trying to pull at the heartstrings with some of these. And so there was an item in our, in our version that talks about no requirement that those funds be used for special education if the student has special needs. And I'd say that's not yet been defined in, in the legislation. I think it was inaccurate to say that it's, that there is no guidance around that necessarily. But also, the whole point of an education opportunity account is for the family to decide how best to use it. They can use it for special education services. They can use it for tuition at school that may be better equipped to meet the needs of their child. There's many, many great private schools in the state who, who have very niche types of focus areas, depending on what the students' needs are. I mean, the entire point is choice. So.
Well, here's, here's an interesting point. There's a group, there's a group called the Philadelphia Scholarship Fund, or the Children's Scholarship Fund of Philadelphia. And they give scholarships to private schools for, for low-income children. And they have very specific rules that include special education. So there, there are a lot of private schools already functioning under those rules. It's not like they wouldn't, they wouldn't, it would reject every child. I mean, that's not the way it works.
Well, and frankly, if you look at the performance of some of the public schools right now, I mean, they're drowning under the caseload for the special education needs. There are more children who are now qualifying or showing qualifying characteristics that are overwhelming the, all of the pupil services or special education services or administrators in our districts. So, the other thing I thought that was very unusual was the reference to further litigation at taxpayer expense. I mean, they really, they really went for all of the red flags there. They were just like, alert, alert, alarm, danger, danger, don't do this. You know, and then just the fact that, you know, we, that will also, to Sid, like, take it, like, nitpick. I mean, if you're gonna be misinformation. They also incorrectly referred to the Basic Education Funding Commission multiple times and used the wrong acronym. But you're like, if you're gonna take the time to do this, at least make it correct.
So what's gonna happen with this resolution?
So in our district, I mean, they, they, they passed it. So that means the hard copy was printed out and our, our board president signed it on behalf. So like, if you were to look it up, it would say that the Westchester area school board, you know, you know, like, passed this resolution. I mean, I'm a dissenting vote.
Were you the only one?
I was the only one.
Okay.
Despite asking these questions, and it was interesting because when I challenged, why would we do this? Like, what, what interest do we have? We have so many problems to solve. Why would we spend our time to do this? And it was interesting because another school director chimed in and said it was to show support for solidarity. Let me translate that for you. That's called a virtue signal. So, somebody decided that we needed, that either, I, I don't know if this is maybe setting up an easy out for Governor Shapiro to take a pass on this, is that there needed to be some form of resistance, some unified call of action to say, this is unfair to school districts. And I think what we've seen the last three and a half years is, people don't do their research. And that is, they'll look at the headline, and that becomes the story. And they don't read the story to actually learn the facts and the details. So just the fact that the entire public school system got a coordinated effort of boards to go, we're losing funding because of this, that became the narrative. And that became the fact, because that is the perception. But that's not the fact. It's maybe the feeling. People feel like it takes away from public education, but it factually does not.
Well, I mean, what it takes away from public education is students. And it's students who don't want that education. And that's the part that people just don't want to recognize. It, you don't leave a place that you like.
The money doesn't follow the student, though. And in this version of the bill, the money does not go with the student because it's separately funded. So why would overwhelmed school districts, I put ours even in that category, why would overwhelmed school districts who may lose a couple of students but still keep their state funding for those student headcounts be upset with the attrition of some students who are gonna be able to go where they feel they are better served?
Because, because, once you open the door, and I think they know that, once you open the door, we can, we, people are gonna want a more pluralistic school system, which I think was- think will serve more, much more people's needs. But they're against that. And they know that by opening up the door, that's what happens.
Well, I think when you're doing an excellent job, you don't need to worry about the competition.
That's what I say. That's what I say. Yeah. Yeah. And, and, you know, that's the other thing. You know, it's funny. Like I said, I've been in the charter world for a while. And I used to tell, I used to tell other charter people, you know, hold on, the school district's gonna get sick of this stuff, and really come after us, and really start improving everything, and we won't be able to keep up with them. That's never happened. It's never been that kind of a fight. If we ever got into that kind of a fight, where all the schools are fighting to get better, imagine what that would do for children.
I, I have dreams. That is one of them.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. Stacy, this has been a very interesting conversation. And I, I, first of all, I applaud you for standing up for what's right, and I wish you the very best.